Pastor, pastor of first, of Beaumont First United Methodist Church. Everyone, please silence your cell phones and if you so choose, please stand and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Mayor West. Let us pray. Everlasting God, fill us with your grace and remind us of your glory. We give thanks today that you came not to simply snap your fingers and solve all our problems, but to be by our side and to walk with us through all the seasons that are ahead. So in that same spirit, help us in this room, and especially our leaders, remember to walk by each other's side through all the challenges that we face and through all the difficulties we seek to overcome, so that in all that we do, we would walk with a spirit of unity, remembering you call us to walk by each other's side, no matter what we face in this life. So God lead us and guide us and help us to know you more through the decisions that are made this day, through the conversations that begin, and through all that is to come. Challenge us always to seek after the love that you alone provide and to know you more through all that is to come. It's in your name that we pray. Amen. May I have roll call, please?
Mayor West.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Dureo.
Present.
Councilmember Getz.
Present.
Councilmember Turner.
Here.
Councilmember Phil Shaw.
Present.
Councilmember Samuel.
Present.
And Councilmember Neal.
Present.
Thank you.
Okay, today we have one proclamation and one presentation. First, we have a proclamation for Know Your County Courthouse Day, accepting will be Reverend J.D. Roberts, founder of Save Our Children, in motion.
I'll read the proclamation first and then they can come up.
Okay.
Whereas Save Our Children in Motion was organized in 2003 and since its inception has had hands-on experience working with more than 8,000 youth. And whereas SOC is a community-based organization serving all youth throughout the city of Beaumont and the Golden Triangle, where 80% of the youth are at-risk youth and from low-income households. Whereas Save Our Children in Motion's goal is to reach children prior to their teenage years and to help them become valued contributors and positive influences in their community. Whereas SOC has implemented programs that teach personal safety, instill morals and principles, provide academic tutorials, facilitate educational and recreational activities, afford cultural opportunities, and foster spiritual growth. Whereas on Wednesday, July 12th, 2023, SOC will present to children ages seven to 18, Know Your County Courthouse Day at the Jefferson County Courthouse to help them have a better understanding of county government. Now therefore, Roy West, Mayor of the City of Beaumont, do hereby proclaim Wednesday, July 12th, 2023, as Know Your County Courthouse Day in Beaumont, and commend the Save Our Children in Motion, Inc. organization for sponsoring an event to educate and inform our youth. Accordingly, the mayor has hereunto set his hand and cause the seal of the City of Beaumont to be affixed. Signed, Roy West, July 12th, 2023. And accepting is J.D. Roberts and anybody else that's accompanying him. Reverend Roberts. Shake everybody's hand. Thank you so much.
I don't know why they stayed right here.
Would you like to get a picture?
One, two, and three.
Is hot outside. First of all, I'd like to thank you, Mayor, Council, for this honor to be here after two years of drought, right back where we started again. It's a pleasure and an honor from not only myself, my wife who's in the back, my daughter who's taking pictures, and these are just some of the people that stand up for what we believe in, and that is unity in the community. First of all, we did bring gifts. Now remember now, that guy's a big guy, so he the one that get the two X's. This is his. I'm a person.
You don't put that out there like that.
Everybody.
Get a double X's.
The bag is empty, but I go outside and get a couple more. But I would be remiss not to do what I do, and that's thank some special people that have been with SOC ever since we started and we met. So there's four individuals. One of the individuals I know is not here, but I'm quite sure we'd be putting the award in good hands, okay? First of all, Taylor Neal. Taylor, I want to let you know, man, ever since I started SOC, you've been around. But knowing your county courthouse, you have not only been around, but you've given your time, your patience, and your money. So now, from us to you, we'd like to present you with just a token of our love. And let me read it, so that way I don't have to read it over again. It says, "SOC Know Your County Courthouse, in appreciation, this certificate is proudly presented to Taylor Neal. We are grateful for your sponsorship, partnership, and love to SOC Know Your County Courthouse. In appreciation of your endless partnership and your dedication for the welfare of all the youth in the city, we are presenting you with this token of love and gratitude. What you do, my friend, is priceless." And I'm gonna let our Vice President, Danny Sims, present that to you. And then we have Mike Getz. Mike, from the beginning of SOC, you have been right there by my side. Regardless of what people said and did, we stuck together, and today is another day that we'll be sticking together. The award says the same thing, but we have an especial award, and that especial award, I will read. SOC's Know Your County Courthouse presents an appreciation. This certificate is proudly presented to Allison Getz. Your wife have been, I mean, a rock to what we do at that courthouse, and I can't even thank you guys enough. So we gonna be delivering something to your house, but I'm giving you this to show you that we, the SOC Nation, appreciate you and your wife and what y'all have done for the community of our youth. And let me make a correction. On this proclamation, it said 8,000. We have reached over 35,027 years of dealing with our youth. And so with that being said, I'm gonna let them present this. And last but not least, my ride-and-die friend. Two years ago, we made our mind up that we was gonna change the face of Beaumont one more time. We said we was gonna do it with honesty, but most of all, unity in the community. My friend, Mayor Roy West, while you have been there for everything we've done, you've come and you've been a clown, you've been all the day above at the schools, all the kids know you, and in order to make a difference in anybody's lives, people need to know who you are. So from us to you, we want to give you this little token of our appreciation and love, and ask that you continue to do what you do, and that is bring unity in the community. And I'd like to personally present this to you, my friend. And with that being said, I hope you guys have a wonderful, wonderful meeting, because with all these people here, it look like it's gonna be a lot of interesting stuff said today. And may God bless you and keep you is our prayer.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
All right, next, we have a presentation by Ms. Betty Russo, Regional Representative for the East Coast, Gulf Coast, East Texas Region with the Office of Texas Economic Development and Tourism. And Ms. Russo, if you'd please come forward.
Thank you. It's an honor to be here today. Good afternoon. My name is Betty Russo, Regional Representative for the Gulf Coast, East Texas Region with the Texas Economic Development and Tourism Office with the Office of the Governor. I am here today on behalf of the Texas Film Commission to recognize the city of Beaumont for achieving your film-friendly Texas certification. We want to thank Miles Haynes with the City of Beaumont for all his work, Mayor West, members of council, and city stakeholders for their support in realizing this exciting initiative for the city of Beaumont. You join over 170 communities across the state and have positioned the city to provide media productions with an increased assurance that Beaumont is industry-savvy and serious about welcoming their business to your community. You are prepared to accommodate on-location filming activity and match Beaumont businesses with media production-related needs and services. The film-friendly Texas certification is another avenue to create jobs for the local community and bring production investment into Beaumont through spending on local goods and services such as catering, construction supplies, transportation, lodging, and more. Texas Film Commission is a division of the Office of the Governor's Department of Economic Development and Tourism. Created in 1971, our mission is to promote Texas as a premier media production destination. Film-friendly Texas is the statewide network of communities and exemplifies our state as a media production-friendly destination. Your work sends a clear message that communities across Texas are ready to welcome and work together with media productions in their community. Between 2007 and 2022, through the Moving Industry Incentive Program, the Texas Film Commission attracted $1.95 billion in local spending and created more than 183,000 production jobs across the state. This statewide economic impact would not be possible without the help of film-friendly Texas community partners such as yourselves. The film-friendly certification gives Beaumont the opportunity to highlight and showcase Beaumont Main Street, your unique and distinctive businesses, the Julie Rogers Theater, citywide artistic murals, Big City Natural Preserve, and local residences, just to name a few. On behalf of the Texas Film Commission, congratulations on becoming the next film-friendly Texas city. I'd like to present this certificate to you.
All right, one, two, and three. Thank you very much. Yes, appreciate you. Okay, for those that were here for the presentations and proclamation, if you would like to leave, now's the time to do so. And thank you for coming. Now, I want everybody to pay a little attention because we're having a little bit of change-up today, which we were going to be eliminating the green sheets, but with the new kiosks, because we're trying to be more green with using more technology when people come in. But as what often happens with technology, sometimes there's a glitch. So we're still gonna use our green sheets today, so just be aware of that. Now, is the time for citizens that wish to speak. You may make public comments on the consent agenda and the regular agenda on items six, seven, and eight. And this is different, so pay attention to this. And anyone who would like to speak on a matter of public concern may also do so. If you choose to make your public comments at the beginning of the council meeting, we're allowing that because in the past, it was just at the end of the meeting, and sometimes our meetings take a while. You are allowed to do that. However, if you make a comment at the beginning, you won't be allowed to make one at the end as well. So you're ready to open it up for comments at the end again, and so you'll be able to, for those that want to wait, you can certainly do that. The city clerk will now call your name, and when it's your time to speak, when you approach the podium, please keep your, say your name, address, city and state. Please keep your comments to three minutes. The green light will come on when you approach the podium, and the red light will come on when your time is up. And just for a point of reference, your mic will be muted at the end of three minutes because we're gonna be consistent with everybody that comes up for comments. So.
Charlene, is it Charlene? Charlene Sam, 2370 Monroe, Beaumont, Texas, Public Comments.
Okay, two people from the city did reach out, but there was no update or mention of any changes to the current cat ordinance, which is what I asked council to address. Traps cost $100 a day. Cat owners need to be responsible for cost to contain or keep their cats away. Cats like dogs or animals. No pets should have freedom to roam throughout the city whenever they choose. That makes them just like strays. As for the city's ordinances, I agree with the mayor, they all need reviewing, especially the tree ordinance, which allows property owners to hold on to dead and damaged trees, and the parking ordinance that allows people to throw parties and have an unlimited amount of traffic parked all over the neighborhood. Residential houses were not made for large gatherings of 30 to 50-plus people. Lastly, while I'm not aware of all of the particulars, I listened to the previous city council meeting, and since my time is limited, briefly, when individuals go into a correctional facility, able-bodied, but come out in a wheelchair permanently, that's a big problem. The sheriff is concerned about the criminal case, depending on, depending on the conduct of the officer, that has the possibility to impact the prosecution of the criminal case in question. The issue appears to be one that I've experienced myself. Conduct. It's not all officers, but there are Beaumont police officers who have extremely poor and unacceptable conduct, and they exhibit this on traffic stops as well. The Beaumont Police Department does lack transparency, and when police officers don't follow their own company protocols and wear their body cams, it should, it is a problem, and it should not, under any circumstance, take the Beaumont Police Department over six months or more to the release discovery tapes, especially when citizens only have 30 days to file an official complaint on officers. Equally important, when discovery tapes are made available to view, a 15- to 20-minute stop shouldn't be chopped up into unrecognizable many pieces. So it seems to me, maybe we, the citizens of Beaumont, need to create transparency, since the Beaumont Police Department seems such a, have such a challenge doing so.
Thank you.
Luther Holmes, 930 Calder, Beaumont, Texas.
I'd like to just follow up and say what the person just read, amen. Out of care and concern, I've been given a ticket, and this has happened four times, and my vehicle was searched against my will. Now, grant you, there was no justifiable reason for wanting to search my vehicle. I wasn't driving reckless. And so, right now, I'm trying to go to trial on the ticket, and it's been a year. I put in a motion for discovery, hadn't received that yet, and checked last week, and they said that was because of software. They claim a software failure. I'm not only speaking for myself, but I'm speaking for all who is afflicted by this type of abuse by some of the Beaumont police officers. I just wanted to read some things from the constitutional United States of America. Rodriguez versus United States, primary holding, extending routine traffic stop to conduct a dog sniff is unconstitutional as unreasonable seizure under the Fourth Amendment unless there is reasonable suspicion of criminal activity. And there has never been reasonable suspicion of criminal activity in my case, but yet, my rights were violated. My concern is this, if we don't beat the battle at the gate, we open up the door to human rights violation and all type of abuse. As the speakers that spoke before me, I'm just here to say amen to what she said. Now, there's been three councils, two of them, this has happened to me four times, two of them, nothing has been done about the problem. It's on you, Mayor West. And many of you would say, well, that's not related to me. I say, yeah, God could and would if he was so.
Thank you. And I would like to remind everybody that we can't respond at this time, but somebody from the city will follow up with you if you make comments and if you're unable to complete your comments as well.
Terry Roy, 6055 Libby, Beaumont, Texas, item number seven.
When Councilman Turner appointed me to the Parks Committee, I took it with a lot of pride, and I'm sure he entrusted that to me because he trusted me that I would make good decisions. And as a committee, we voted on certain things to do to certain parks, and now I'm saying that some of that is one of, wants to be changed. We voted to have a Combes Park and Babes of Harriers Park redone. It doesn't matter to me if two people go out there or if 20 people go out there. We made a commitment to those people in those neighborhoods that we would do that. And if we can't keep our word to what we let people know, then we may as well not have said nothing. Because I'm a man of my word, just like I'm sure Councilman Turner is. And I hope that all of you are people of your word, and that y'all trusted us as a committee to do the right things. And I feel as a committee that we have. And if we don't go by what we say, we need to stop saying things that isn't true and do exactly what we said we're gonna do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Albert Harrison, 1240 Ashley, Beaumont, Texas, item E on the consent agenda and public comments as well.
Mayor West, city council, other city staff, other concerned citizens at present. I wish to reserve my public comments in the meeting.
You can only speak once.
Okay, fine. I wish to, first of all, separate some things. I want to speak on the consent agenda E, which is the grass turf at Sprout Park, but I first must separate some things. I'm not speaking on behalf of the Golden Triangle Cowboys who use that facility for practice. I'm not on their board, nor am I speaking on anyone in that capacity. I'm speaking as a concerned citizen that has a child on that football team. What I see by the city agreeing to put grass turf on that field, I see potential problems. After you put the turf there, other individuals within that community or area, or within the entire city, may want to start using that facility because of the turf. Now, I'm the type of person that believes in, if I bring a problem, I like to bring a solution too as well. So I will request or ask that particular consent agenda to put the actual turf be amended to allow the Cowboys first charge or to use it as a practice facility, because they used it last year and continue to use it this year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ricky Jason, 1075 Magnolia Street, Beaumont, Texas, Public Comments.
God bless you all. I'm community activist Ricky Jason, and I am the protege of the late Dick Gregory, 1075 Magnolia, Beaumont, Texas. I'm here today to say that, we are here to say that we want justice for Christopher Shaw. Christopher Shaw trial starts on the 17th, the pre-trial starts on the 24th here in Beaumont, Texas this month. And we also demanding that police officer James Gillum be fired immediately, because if he would have been white, he would have been fired. It's so sad that the world have to come to Beaumont. The world is coming to Beaumont, and justice is coming to Beaumont. Every board member would agree with me that Christopher Shaw didn't hurt anybody, and may I ask you, last time I was here, to please watch the audio tape, because people are gonna start a boycott here in Beaumont, Texas, and they're gonna demand that justice for Christopher Shaw, because that could be anybody's child in here, anybody's child in here. You would be so upset if your child was paralyzed, the police officer never was even asked to leave the force for a while, he never was laid off. The bottom line, Christopher Shaw is paralyzed, and the cities, the citizens have a right to see the videotape. They taxpayers, what we got videotapes for? Christopher Shaw is paralyzed. I'm trying to let it get through everybody's head. The man can't walk. He had nine surgeries, his neck was broke, and he was in jail with his hands behind his back, handcuffed. James Gillum dropped him on top of his head and paralyzed him. Later on, Officer James Gillum came back and said he was injured. You know why? That was to cuff his ass. But I'm just here to demand y'all to understand that Beaumont, Texas is fixing to get worse than Jasper, Texas. The hundreds of thousands of people fitting to start marching here. I'm just the messenger to give you the message, Mayor, to please look at that audio tape. I'm hoping that y'all hear me. It's serious. He can't walk. So we just gonna let this police officer work? But if it would have been the other way, if Christopher Shaw would have been white, the police officer would have been fired. I'm here today to ask that Officer James Gillum be fired immediately before he hurt another citizen, or next time he gonna kill somebody. It's sad. God bless each and every one of you, and the fight is not over. We will continue justice for Mr. Christopher Shaw in Beaumont, Texas, and he's gonna get it. So Mayor, I ask you to step up. Fire him today, not next week, immediately.
We ask all citizens to please remember our rules of decorum. We do not allow profanity in council chambers. Please make sure that you keep that in mind when making your statements. Thank you.
Thank you.
Trevon Bradford, 1089 Magnolia, Beaumont, Texas. Tiddy, what about Latasha Bradford? 1090 Cartwright, Beaumont, Texas.
I am a victim of judicial misconduct. I've been defrauded and discriminated against by the court system, the judges, the lawyers, and my insurance company, who is Texas Farmers. And I'm gonna reflect on these here in I'm just the messenger to give you the message, Mayor, to please look at that audio tape. I'm hoping that y'all hear me. It's serious. He can't walk. So we just gonna let this police officer work? But if it would have been the other way, if Christopher Shaw would have been white, the police officer would have been fired. I'm here today to ask that Officer James Gillum be fired immediately before he hurt another citizen, or next time he gonna kill somebody. It's sad. God bless each and every one of you, and the fight is not over. We will continue justice for Mr. Christopher Shaw in Beaumont, Texas, and he's gonna get it. So Mayor, I ask you to step up. Fire him today, not next week, immediately.
We ask all citizens to please remember our rules of decorum. We do not allow profanity in council chambers. Please make sure that you keep that in mind when making your statements. Thank you.
Thank you.
Trevon Bradford, 1089 Magnolia, Beaumont, Texas. Tiddy, what about Latasha Bradford? 1090 Cartwright, Beaumont, Texas.
I am a victim of judicial misconduct. I've been defrauded and discriminated against by the court system, the judges, the lawyers, and my insurance company, who is Texas Farmers. And I'm gonna reflect on these hearing transcripts, because I've been falsely accused of committing a threat of violence over simply just sending out an email requesting an accounting of services supposedly performed by Lindsey Linsen Porsons. And I'm gonna just reflect on just a few of the statements, and these transcripts have been redacted and altered by Judge Mitch Templeton's court reporter herself. Now, on this section here, they didn't know the machine was still recording when they made those hateful comments. I'm referring to Judge Mitch Templeton. And before he made this comment, Lindsey Linsen Porsons attorney was pushing for a gag order to keep me from going public with my story exposing them. Okay, I'm gonna read out loud, and this is Judge Mitch Templeton saying this. He's asking for a gag order to silence me, Lindsey Linsen Porsons attorney. Yeah, I'm not going to do that. We have a potential to make this worse, you know? You already mentioned what's going on nationally, and what he's referring to is me going public with my story, because I sent them an email letting them know that this is gonna explode over the internet. I think what's being done is not gonna make things better, it's going to make things worse, and I'm afraid we might do that with this situation here, like I was classically taught after law school. I'm beginning to wonder what was being taught after I went to law school, but the right for free speech you disagree with is more speech, not less. So I'm just inclined not to do the gag order, and I don't even like the sound of that term, but I don't blame you for using it. I know what you meant. Now, these attorneys here, they have a 30-year business relationship with this judge, and the court reporter, she redacted this section here, as you can still see it, it's very visible, even though she drew lines across it. He was just basically saying, yeah, you know, I don't believe any of those allegations are true based on the 30 years of being your opponent, which means they have a 30-year business relationship. And the judge's, his opponent in the 2018 election, she was so accurate in her statement, and I'm gonna just quote what she said in her news interview. The good old boss system should have no place at the courthouse. You can't tell people it's a place of justice if you're operating from the stance of who you know. For anyone to feel like they're getting justice in this county, we can't put in place a system where justice is delegated by who you know and what attorney is representing you. And these are just complaints, BBB complaints against this same attorney.
Shirley Walton, 2702 Magnolia, Beaumont, Texas. Item number seven on the agenda.
I'm gonna repeat my address again. It's 2702 Magnolia, Beaumont, Texas, 77703. I was born and raised in that house, and I'm moving back to that house, and I wanna see our community revitalized. I'm here today to talk about number seven on the agenda, whereas I live a block away from Magnolia Park, and I'd like to see Magnolia Park receive some of the funds that's becoming available. There's a lot to be done in our community, and I'd like the financial support from the city. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Dr. Elmo Johnson, 1103 Cushing, Houston, Texas.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. Congratulations on your win. I'm here about the property on Magnolia, 3494 Magnolia. I want to purchase that property from a church. I pastor a church in Houston. I have property here in Beaumont, and I did a lot of redevelopment in Houston. Redeveloped Fourth Ward, built over 100 houses, low to moderate income there, and apartments. So I want to purchase that property, but it have a weed lien on it for $8,000. It's twice as much as the property is worth, but I want to clean it up. It's a win-win for the city, for the people in the neighborhood. We take, it's not on the tax roll, we'll put it back on the tax roll. We'll make sure it's cut, make sure we put low to moderate income duplex there. It will beautify the community, it will go back on the tax roll, and it'll be helpful. It's a win-win for everybody. If you can forgive that $8,500 of weed abatement, I don't know how the system work, but I would like to work with you on that. And I have some additional property here in Beaumont. I would like to build some low to moderate income housing, and I'd like to get with your office and some of the city council to see if we can help in any way to bring some low to moderate income housing here in Beaumont. You have a great city here. I see the plaques that the youth, it's a wonderful time in Beaumont. You are in a time of progress and you in a time of going forward, so I certainly want to be a part of that, if I can get with your office and we'll get, thank you.
Thank you.
Wilford Sipian Jr., 2389 Pierce Street, Beaumont, Texas. Item E on the consent agenda.
I'm the owner and head coach of the Golden Triangle Seminoles semi-pro adult football team. We just recently won a championship, the BSFL Tier Two Championship, first time in a city of Beaumont that's actually been done with a semi-pro minor league football team. We've been around for 10 years, this is our 10-year anniversary. I heard a gentleman earlier about Sprout Park, we practiced at Sprout Park for about eight, nine years. We know the area pretty well, but what we doing, we want to give back to the community, but we need a place to play too. We've, we're Golden Triangle, but we've been playing from, we started off in Beaumont, then we went to Vider, then we went to Orange, went to Port Arthur, so now we're trying to come home, but we need a place to play. Our system has proven that it works. We've, we put at least 30 guys in college. We've had two guys play overseas, playing Germany football right now as we speak. We've had six guys from our team that went off to be teachers. I teach for Smith Middle School myself personally now, over the special ed department. I've had other coaches that went out and landed coaching jobs in Houston as well. So my main concern going forward, for this year going forward, is home. We want to bring the team back to Beaumont. This year, as y'all know, if y'all probably followed the team, we had 23 guys that played for Beaumont United, never reached a playoff game before. Well, this year, not only did they reach the playoff game, but they won it and they won a championship. So what we're doing, we know it works. Whatever y'all need from us, we willing to do, but we need a place to call home. That way, we can make sure we continue to build these guys up, make them model citizens in the community, Port Arthur, Beaumont, wherever they come from, Vider, you name it, we just want a place to call home.
Thank you.
Glenda McCray, 890 Norwood Drive, Beaumont, Texas. Item number seven on the agenda.
I am Glenda McCray, 890 Norwood, Beaumont, Texas. I've been a member of this, I've been a citizen of this wonderful city for six decades, and I love Beaumont. I think it's a remarkable thing you're doing for the playground that needs to be redeveloped at Babe's Harriers and Combes Park. Wonderful, but I want to put a bug in your ear. Beaumont needs a water park. We, I wanted to go to the Lazy River in Baytown at Pirates Bay Park, but Beaumont, I think we put that bug in Sheriff Griffith's ear years ago, but it never happened. We got Ford Park. We have enough land here to have our own water park. So I'm putting a bug in your ear to think about it. I think it's wonderful, the children need something to do to keep them out of trouble. I haven't been here in a long time, so I forgot to check more than one box. I think I have a half a second. I just want to commend the people that answer the telephone 911. I call often, because I love Beaumont, and when somebody's driving crazy, I call 911. I give them the color of the vehicle, the license plate and everything. The officers are really good, and they say, no, don't chase them, don't follow them. I say, okay. So I just want to commend them, but I also want to say that I've been here, I'm gonna repeat, I've been here for six decades, and I know Beaumont, and I know the citizens here, and we have changed for the better. But when I called 911 three weeks ago, and I was very concerned with a middle-aged white female, between Folsom and Gladys, but they were no shoes on her feet, and she was panting, and I was so concerned, but I was going in the opposite direction, but I asked that the officers go and check on. But what bothered me most is she didn't ask what she was wearing, or they didn't give a lot of, they didn't ask me a lot of questions like they have in the past. So I just want them to be transparent, and I want everybody to be safe. Also, I want us not to pollute. I want to keep Beaumont beautiful, and it doesn't make sense, citizens of Beaumont, to dump trash on Dollin Road, it just makes it look awful, or Helbig Road, and I saw...
Thank you.
Margaret Goliass, 3430 Avalon, Beaumont, Texas. Item number seven. Goliass, I am so sorry.
Thank you, City Council. I am here to tell you thank you for all the many, many years' work that I have enjoyed working with some of the new members, maybe not yet. I was past president of the Beaumont Council of Garden Clubs, and you may not know, but we have 23 garden clubs in our fair city and about 600 members of all kinds. We even have a gentleman's rose, a rose garden that the men come out and tend to. So I invite you all out. But when I saw this, this morning with Councilman Getz, talking about perhaps moving some of the monies around for the parks, I don't know, I'm sure you know how many visitors come to Terrell Park? We had, two years ago, no, 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 four years ago, before COVID, we had 23 countries, not counting Mexico or Canada, 23 countries that year come in and sign our book. And I thought that was phenomenal, considering there's only 179 countries in the world. That's pretty good for a little bitty Beaumont, Texas. So, but our police officers have done a fabulous job on cleaning it up, making sure, I know we had an accident with a young man, but I mean, you know, that was tragic. But Terrell Park used to be an awful place. It's not awful anymore, and I really appreciate Jimmy Singletary working with me when we were trying to, you know, spruce it up, make it for families. So kids are part of a family. We don't have any playground equipment for the kids. So, and, you know, we try to keep them from picking the roses and picking the flowers, so if we had something for them to play on, I wouldn't have to go out there and scream. So anyway, but thank you so much. I invite you out. I was part of the crew that rebuilt Terrell Park after two hurricanes, and we can do it again if we have to, but anyway, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Addie Allen, 9695 Gross, Beaumont, Texas. Item B on the consent agenda. And public comments.
I really resent not being able to speak at the end, but I will comply. Good afternoon, Mayor and the council. On B, that's about acceptance of a temporary working space agreement with TransCanada Keystone Pipeline. My question is, I saw where it was an agreement to fix pipe, then I read new construction. I was confused about the verbiage. A thousand dollars is the only amount that they're being charged. However, it said something to the effect, if there's any damage or whatever, that'll be later. My question is, why don't we have a whole harmless agreement if you're going across property? Why is it just a thousand dollars? And why have we not had more information in that packet about Keystone? Is that marshland? I don't know. And if it's marshland, I don't know why the environmentalists are not screaming. And I have to speak at the, for my other concerns now?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so I read, wrote them down. I've been in two tornadoes here. One was in the daytime, I left the council, one was at night. I can't understand why we can do beautiful ornamentation for the police department with gates and not protect the citizens to give them an alarm. I still am waiting for some credence in getting somebody up here to talk about the sirens rather than staff, which had a convoluted opinion, and that has not been straightened out. The other thing that I'm concerned about is the sidewalks. Last year that I talked about, the kids are out of school now. Why isn't there any update on that grant or Beaumont get-off-of-money in the ordinance that says you're responsible for sidewalks? These kids need to be safe. If we're gonna make the police department safe with wrought iron gates, we need to make the kids safe with sidewalks. And, you know, I'm just hoping and praying that you come to grips with what's needed there. With the sirens, if you can't make a decision, why don't we put it on the ballot? And let's see what the citizens say, because we do have an opinion. It's been my opinion, but let's listen to somebody else since you're gonna be transparent. I really appreciate you all sitting up there, and I know that you spend midnight all doing this stuff, but we need to be protected as well. The police carry guns, but a siren is for everybody.
The Pharaoh Richard, 5275 Parkview Drive, Beaumont, Texas. Public comments.
Good afternoon. The side note, in my 37 years of living in Terrell Park, I've never known it to be an awful place, but a very loving place that I feel very safe in, getting to my reason for being here. For seven years now, I have been approaching the council almost every Tuesday because I have a safety concern, concerning the sidewalks on all the major thoroughfares, meaning for the walking students, bike riders, wheelchairs, runners, and all near schools. I'm once again asking the council to consider, with your surplus, sidewalks on 11th Street, Washington, Major, College, Dollin, Concord, Magnolia, Sarah, Lavaca, and Feland. I believe that this will prevent a lot of the deaths that are occurring, because when the grass is muddy after rain, it's very difficult for people to ride a bike in the grass, it's very difficult for a wheelchair to go through the grass. Secondly, I'm pleading with the council to consider changing the speed limit between Walden Road all the way to MLK to maybe 35 miles an hour. With this new closure of an exit, I have witnessed multiple near accidents, including the one this morning where the 18-wheeler almost ran over me, which was very frightening, and I literally put my hazards on because there was an 18-wheeler that was stopped right where the barrier was. So would you please consider, between Walden Road and MLK, like most cities, when there's construction, the speed limit... construction, the speed limit is changed, it's lowered. I think this will save multiple lives and I would rather experience a traffic jam going east and west instead of a death investigation. That's my personal opinion, 35 or even 25 to save lives. And please, can you put up signs to warn people this exit is closed? There's not enough room to break and it's happening. It's already on the news, two accidents already. Lastly, we have an increase in violence. I'm not with George Orwell, 1984, if you're familiar with Big Brother. However, in larger cities, there are more cameras that are placed, even if it's streetlights or wherever, because I think that if people know, it will help with a lot of the gun violence if they know that there's security cameras. An example, a lady was killed, a young college student in Hancock Park. LA has over 100,000 homeless people within 48 hours. They tracked him from Hancock Park, which is near, not really Beverly Hills, but in an affluent area of LA. They found him all the way in the valley because they use the cameras on the streetlights and the metro trains and the metro buses. Out of 100,000 people, they found the one homeless man that brutally stabbed this young lady. Thank you for your time.
Charlie Crabbe, 928 East Drive, Beaumont, Texas. Item number eight on the agenda and public comments.
Good afternoon, Mayor, staff. And yeah, it's a nice day in Beaumont. Uh, let's see. Mayor, I don't think it's a good idea to, to move the public comment, uh, not, not have it at the end of the meeting. I think it's more, uh, appropriate to have all the business comment at the, at the beginning of the meeting and then we'll have, uh, public comment at the end of the meeting. I'm here today to address and, uh, I guess the, uh, one of the agendas, uh, the, uh, regular agenda number eight about the, uh, upcoming study for the, um, hotel. And I would like to, uh, uh, it would be a good idea for a hotel downtown. I hope the local hotel chains have been contacted to see if any one of them have an interest in building the downtown hotel. If money is spent on a study, it must be very thorough. First, I believe a nature's wheel type restaurant would, would, uh, be neat to down on the, uh, riverbank or near the riverbank. If it is, uh, a success in full speed ahead with consideration on a hotel. The restaurant should be open air and, and built on a wooden raised platform to give a good view of the river. Construction would minimize the cost. And thanks for the, uh, Amelia's, excuse me. Thanks for Amarillo Street being added to the, uh, resurfacing list. And now I would like to say hello to all the apartment managers and other employees in attendance. I have noticed that the apartment managers do a great job on describing their department activity and answering all questions when appearing before council. Think about the entire organization chart for the city and how everyone on, on the chart is need to fulfill their duty to have a successful day in, in accomplishing the needs of the city. I would like to say thanks to all the city employees for their services. It is a very nice that so many people do so much on a daily basis to make the city operate. And thanks for your, um, time today and, uh, everybody have a good day.
Thank you.
Pastor, Pastor Joseph Roberts, 5475 Landry Lane, Beaumont, Texas. Item number seven on the agenda.
Again, good evening, council. Um, I just want to throw a little meeting the gumbo pertaining to the parks in general. Um, I grew up here in Beaumont and one of the things we had in Beaumont was a refuge to go to at nighttime, in the morning time, and that was the basketball courts. We need covers on the courts to keep our kids off the streets. They're not gonna go play basketball in the dark. Now, one way say, well, what's up with the basketball? I'm glad you asked. What's up with it is we can control what we see. If you can't see it, you can't control it. Our kids need a place that they can go to 24/7 in order to get whatever off their backs. You know, basketball is, is like boxing. Every now and then you just got to hit something just to get over it. And that's what it's like with basketball. But for some reason, we are forgetting the reason why you are sitting here today. And that's our children, our future, our youth. So I plead with you. It's, it's, it's no mystery why our kids are doing what they're doing. Everybody want to talk about the kids, but nobody want to do anything that's positive to change it. So let's quit the wars about what we go do with money and let's start looking at why things are happening in our communities. Why there's so many shootings in the north end of town? Why there's so many shootings out there by, by Lamar University? Start looking and I guarantee you, when you start looking at why we having all these problems, you'll understand that a lot of the problems is us because we're not stepping out there doing what we know we need to do. Arden can testify, when he was coming up as a child, we had places to go. You know, you didn't have to just wait on the daylight to come in order to do something. We had places. And if you're not gonna open the period, uh, center at nighttime and open these different things, the guy at the L.L. Milton, he just started opening up. Why? Because he understand the passion I have and the passion that he have to start making a difference, not talk about it. So when we start talking about doing things for parks, let's first of all start looking at where we had the problems at. Cause when we start counseling the problems, then people can be safe enough to go to the parks. You know, yes, I understand. Yeah, they play soccer out there on Saturdays and Sundays, but what about Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday? So when we start talking about directing money to, for our youth, let's look at it. Sit down and write it down. It ain't about what some people want, it's what's best for the city. So I thank y'all for hearing me out because I had to say something pertaining to this because they're looking at the wrong thing.
Thank you.
That's all I have, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Now with regards to the approval of the consent agenda, we're gonna look to pull item number C. So, uh, it's just the remainder of the items. Is there a motion and a second for approval of consent agenda with pulling item C to talk about and discussion?
For approval, second.
It's been moved and seconded for approval of the consent agenda, agenda. Any discussion?
Yes.
Councilman Turner.
Mr. Manager, I already see a problem coming prior to it even coming. And this with the artificial turf over there at Sprout Park. Uh, I've already had two youth groups reach out in reference to practicing and I've already had a professional team reach out as well. So I want to know as a council, could we figure out some way to get ahead of being organized to this magnitude with this particular field? Or would it be first come, first served? Like how are we looking at managing and running this particular project?
So historically, the, the parks in general are, have always been just open to the public. Um, and, and prior to even putting turf there, several different organizations just used it for practice and for the public. I would caution council, um, if you want to get involved in regulating how people use that, that space, um, then you would have to treat it like rental space. And if this is something that's meant to be open and available for the public for free use, that might be something you want to consider.
Well, I, I think as a council, we might need to look at all options because I can see it becoming a, a big problem based upon just a few comments that's been made today and other phone calls as well. So I just want to see how others felt about it.
Councilman Phil Shaw, then Councilman Durio.
Yeah, my question would simply be, is there not a way for the staff to, uh, set up some type of a scheduling to where there is no confusion or competition out on the field? People fighting over who's gonna use it at that time? Surely our staff, uh, has the ability to, to actually just schedule the use of the field. So that's put to you in a form of a question.
With that being said, like we have baseball fields and other recreational fields that we charge to rent and we charge people to reserve that. We, we charge to maintain that schedule. We charge to, to enforce those rules. So when you reserve a time, that's your time because you've paid for that time as opposed to-
But doesn't mean that we have to charge for this one. This council has the authority to set these rules. I'm not, uh, uh, and I'll listen to the staff and their recommendation, but I'm just asking the question, can we not set a mechanism in place where people can simply schedule the use of the field?
Well, and, and the term I know some legal reasons that I don't know, but I, it's typical to be able to schedule, uh, a park property, property that's public property, but it's basically first come, first served if it's like that. Uh, and that's, it's gonna be the basic rule if you, if you do that. Of course, you can set those, the parameters that you like and what you, how that could happen, but typically that's how, that's how it works. Excuse me.
Councilman Durio.
I think we currently are able to reserve the shelters out in Terrell Park without being charged for them. So I, I wouldn't see why we couldn't do something like that with that football field also, just a reserve of time. And, uh, I don't know if we would have to have somebody out there from staff to enforce it to where it doesn't become a problem, but I don't see why we couldn't set up something where they, whoever wants to use that field should be able to reserve a date and time without us having to charge for it.
Councilman Getz, then Councilman Turner.
Oh, sorry.
I, I can see this as analogous to what we do at the municipal tennis center. We have a hybrid type of system where during prime time, you do pay to play out there. You do reserve a court and you, uh, you pay for that. Uh, it's, it's a minimal, but you, you do have to have a reservation. You do have to pay for that. During a times that are not in high demand, it's open play and it's, it's, uh, free to anybody, first come, first served. So, um, you know, maybe that's an option.
Councilman Samuel, then Councilman Turner.
Well, I don't think this is something that we can just, uh, step into lightly because it's gonna create problems. Either it's gonna be for free to the public whereby the person first come, first serve, or it's gonna have to be some type of regulations. Because what happens if someone says, okay, they don't have to pay, but they can say, I want to reserve it for this time, this time, this time, on this day, this day, this day. And there's no other openings. What happens then? So it's, we can't just, uh, knee jerk and come up with a, say what we're gonna do because there are repercussions from any decisions made. Because right now, it's a free space. And that's what it was intended to be, a free space for kids to play or have some type of athletic events out there. But if we begin to start reserving space, there's gonna have to be some means of reserving because some might reserve it and don't even use it. Or they might reserve it and they reserve all the times that is available. So that's something I think we need to give more, uh, more attention to before we get into making, uh, some type of knee jerk rule that could create even more problems.
Councilman Turner.
And just to, that was the reason for bringing this up today because I foresee it possibly being a problem. There's no adamant reason that it may not be, but I do see it possibly being a problem just from the excitement of wanting to utilize and that's the only one we will have in Beaumont. And another thing is when it is first come, first served, you might have, like you said, two teams scheduling to be there and you got parents and travel way over there. I'm just trying to look at it, you know, in the future. But I am just bringing it up for discussion today, not, not saying I want to make a decision, but maybe staff could come back with maybe some recommendations of what they think and if that thinks it's best to do first come, first served. I just want to open this dialogue because I do foresee it possibly being a problem. Hopefully it doesn't. But you know, if it comes around, I just want to be prepared for it.
Councilman Durio and that, well, City Manager Williams.
It's gonna be, I think we have time. It's gonna be a while. I mean, the, the turf that's going down hasn't even come in yet. The turf, the turf that's out there is not the turf, the turf that's out there is, they're gonna, it's just some old carpet, they're gonna spread that out and they're gonna lay the, the turf that they're gonna lay on there just to keep it off the grass until they're able to put it down. So we still have time for staff, uh, to work and, uh, come up with a, with a, uh, a way that we can do this, uh, right?
Yes, and that's what I recommend if it pleases the council for staff to go back and, and, and analyze this situation with legal staff too and, uh, come back with some recommendations to city council.
Okay. Councilman Samuel.
Thank you, Mayor. I think this is a good opportunity. Uh, it sounds like, uh, there might be more activity if we do, uh, if we continue doing some of the improvements that we're doing. Uh, there's been a semi-professional football team in Beaumont before, uh, with Tootie Dury. So I remember those days. Uh, I was there. Uh, but now with the prospective additional use, maybe we might want to look at, uh, another park and, uh, utilize turf and do rentals. Uh, that could be an option. Uh, we have a new budget year coming up. Uh, there's nothing in the budget right now, uh, that's designated for that, but, uh, it's something for us to look at in the future.
Okay, and I would, uh, I would like to get clarity because this isn't, this is just talking about, this has been something that's been discussed by council that a company was donating this artificial turf. And this is just about proceeding on the installation of it and they are ready to do that. And, uh, you know, it, it will still take some time and, but I think these can be independent, uh, uh, subjects to discuss, so.
Yes, ma'am. This is more about accepting a donation of the, of the turf from the company and, uh, being able to install it at the park today.
And Mayor, you might be able to get them to donate some more turf.
We will, uh, I'm sure we'll bring this back to council to determine how best to manage the field, but, uh, if there's no other discussion, any-
One other thing, Mayor.
Oh.
When it's time to install the turf, uh, speaking with the Parks Department, they say they will need volunteers and they would like, maybe want some of the youths to come out and-
Right.
And, uh, and help when it's time to put it down.
And, uh, also the area high school, uh, teams will also be included in that once we, once we get a date. Uh, so I think that's an excellent idea, make it a community event.
Well, thank you, Mayor, for clarifying that because, uh, there was an email that was received questioning why the turf was being left out in the, under the sun and not being put down. So is that the correct answer? That's not the, uh, turf that's to be installed? That's just-
That's what, uh, come from the Parks Department. Cause, uh, that's the turf that when the real turf is delivered, it's, it's gonna be laid on top of that stuff until it can be, uh, laid on the field.
Okay. Oh, okay.
I, I think we have our-
Your coast line district.
That's the man.
Yeah, so basically the turf that's there now is just gonna be used as a staging area. Uh, it's gonna be laid out when the turf that'll be applied to the field comes in. Just lay on top of that. And because it'll take probably 30 days of prep work, getting everything ready. So that way it's just not laying on the ground and rotting out. Uh, uh, the old turf that you have there now, uh, we may be able to apply that somewhere else and repurpose it in some way, but it won't be used for the field itself. It's really just for the staging.
So if there's no other discussion, uh, with, uh, there's a motion on a second for the approval of the consent agenda with removing item number C for discussion. All in favor of approving the consent agenda minus item C, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The motion is carried. So we will now, uh, discuss item number C.
Item C is council, consider resolution- Item C is council consider resolution accepting payment in the amount of $540 for the principal of a litter lien and the lien assessment fee for lien filed on August 10, 2020 on property legally described as far as L 39B 83494 Magnolia Avenue waiving interest in the amount of 14109. We had this item on here for consideration, but as you heard earlier in public comment, there was also some other interest in this property and the waiving of some other liens on that property. So we felt like it would be good to be able to address that issue along with this and in deciding what to do with the property.
Okay, very well. Let the discussion begin. We have, I believe, maybe our CFO has some information about the property.
Well, I could just offer a recommendation. So apparently what this this property was set to sell at a title company. And while we were sitting here in chambers, we had, I'd just received word that the sale had been, the contract had been rescinded, and it was because of these weed fees. So in light of the fact that the gentleman talked earlier and he does want to still purchase the property, I would recommend maybe we pass a resolution that would waive the lien and the fees in the amount equal to the, in the amount that exceeds the the proceeds. So in other words, right now, what's owed to the city is $8,514.84. If the offer on the property is only 5,000, then that leaves $3,514.84 owed to the city. So in that case, I would suggest just waiving the 3,514 that exceeds the offer. That way, the transaction can go through and the property would be maintained properly going forward. I don't know how you would word that in a resolution since we don't have specific dollars, but if we could maybe waive the lien and fees in the amount that exceeds the proceeds, that would be an option.
Do we have a motion for that?
Councilman Getz had his hand up.
Well, I guess we need to have a motion before we have discussion, so.
So move.
Been moved, and it has been seconded by Councilman Samuel and Councilman Turner. Councilman Getz.
My question was, is all of this lien principal and interest or is it, is it, how's that divided?
So my understanding is on the, on the, on the liens, we start charging interest. There was, there was no liens attached to the weed abatement charges. So there's no interest on there, so that would be all.
That's all charges. Okay.
Any other discussion? Yes.
Is there, is there a building on this property? No?
I don't believe so.
So this is something that they're actually able to come in and 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 offer to buy this property and this is something that we could do with an a resolution?
The gentleman who spoke earlier said that he wanted to either purpose it for a church or for a low income housing. I think, I think they've since left, but that was when he spoke, that's what he said he wanted to use the property for.
And when he said this, he, when he said that, he said it would get back on the tax rolls, but it was churches tax exempt. How would that get back on the tax rolls?
That's if he decides, he said he either wanted to use the property, he has a church, and he wanted to either acquire it for a church or for other things. So I guess it depends on what his use of the property would be for.
Okay. And the reason I'm asking, because I've had a few people approach about red tag houses and wanting to buy them before they're torn down, and and it's a whole different process would make them go to the magistrate and get a temporary restraining order there. Are they able to come before council and ask us to put a hold on that if they're going to buy it?
So red tag properties do go before council. You hear them before, when they come to get put in the work program, but you hear from the owners. And so sometimes those properties are not, you know, the owner isn't here or they don't come before council. And so if someone wants to buy a ragtag property, then they have to go through the work of acquiring the property from the owner. That's not something the city can do. But when there's no one who comes forward to talk on the property to enter the property into a work program, we do, you know, tear down the property because it's a substantive structure.
I've had some of them come and approached me about buying it.
We can't sell property.
No, 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 not from us, buying it from the owner. But they said even, I've been told even if somebody buys it from the owner, the city's still going to demolish it.
That's not correct. We have had people purchase red tag properties and enter the work program. We've actually had people come up and say, hey, I want to sell this property. And council have given them a chance to sell the property to the new owner, and then that new owner came into the work program. That's happened several times.
Just to add on to that, because I know we've had some discussion about that recently. I think some of the ones we're seeing is they have gone to city council. City council has either allowed a work program and it expired. And then staff is under a council order to demolish the property. And so what we've seen recently, and we've seen it, you know, over time, is someone will come in after that work program has expired and said, look, I'm going to buy this. Can I get more time? Well, the issue with staff is we, you know, you've, you're past the deadline from the council order. So that's, that's some of the things we've seen recently.
But, and that's why I was asking, can they come, if they buy that property and it's not demolished yet, but it is red tag, can they come before council and and let us extend it? They're going to buy the property and they're going to refurbish it or whatever they're going to do with it instead of, you know, if they're able to fix it, instead of us going through with the demolition, can they come back before us instead of sending them to court to get a temporary restraining order?
And I'm sorry, Mayor Proton, but we're kind of outside the scope of the posted item. So I apologize for that, but we can talk about it offsite. But Mayor, for this particular item, if council, if that's something that they want to do, I know that the CFO had a question as how we would word that in a resolution, it's my recommendation is if council is seriously considering the waiving of the lien, what we can do if the sale is going to move forward, if the owner wants to get back in his offer, and we have a tangible offer, we can move this item back for next Tuesday with that updated language, if that's something that y'all wanted to consider.
That'd be good, but we've got Councilman Samuel.
For sake of clarity, I want to make sure I'm correct. This property has no structure on it. Correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so that makes this totally different from a property that's red tagged with a structure on it. Now, this is not the owner of the property that's requesting the release of the lien, is it?
He's a buyer. Yes, the owner did submit a request to waive the lien. He was actually going to come speak today, but since the offer got rescinded because of the weed charges, he didn't show up. But the other gentleman, the buyer, did show up. Buyers usually don't request waivers of liens because that is charged against the seller. I'm sorry, the, yeah, the seller.
Okay, so the seller would have to, have to take care of the lien prior to selling the property.
Right, those liens come up during title searches at the title company.
However, at this time, there's a request by the buyer that the lien be released and allow him to buy the property at the price that's being considered. And because of that, that is an opportunity to have someone take care, take the property, invest in the property if we give that opportunity, or we can say no, and the property continues to sit there.
Correct.
And we continue to put money into it and have nothing on the tax roll and no possibility of it being on the tax roll. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so we have a, just to get some clarity, we have a motion in a second. And, but I'm hearing some, a suggestion by our city attorney that we perhaps table this so that we can be talking about the correct motion for the right amount of money so that we can execute this correctly.
Yes, typically waiver of our fees is based on the contingent of the sale. So I believe that the buyer is still interested, but there was a need from council to consider whether or not we would remove that, that lien. So if that's the desire of council, then we can reach out to the seller or the, or the buyer and let them know that council will consider those items and it will be placed on our next agenda item.
So Mayor, with that, I remove my motion, and I'd like to make a new motion that this be tabled and allow staff to facilitate working on a resolution to the property.
Thank you.
Question.
Second for the, for the motion?
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Now, any discussion regarding staff getting that information and bringing it back to us next week?
I just had a question. It was said that this is not on the tax roll. Why isn't it on the tax roll?
It's on the tax roll and they're current on their taxes.
Okay, so, all right.
Councilman Neil.
Thank you, Mayor. You wouldn't want to release the lien unless it's going to the new individual, though. You wouldn't want to release the lien if the current owner's going to keep it.
Right.
Which is why I made the suggestion I did.
Okay, there's a, a motion in a second to table this and bring it back next week. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed, motion passes. Now may we have the reading of item number one.
Thank you, Mayor. Council consider a request for an abandonment of portions of South Archie and Home Streets with the retention of general utility easement. We are requesting to abandon the right to wait for the portions of these streets and want to abandon and exchange of this property has been arranged to provide additional parking for the Event Center and Lakeside Center. At a joint public meeting held on June 26, 2023, the planning commission recommended seven zero to approve the request to abandon portions of South Archie and Home Street with the retention of a general utility easement, and staff's recommended approval of the ordinance.
All right, is there a motion for item number one?
So move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for approval of item number one. Any discussion? All in favor of approving item number one, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed, motion passes. May we have the reading of item number two.
Council consider a request for a rezoning from RS residential single family dwelling to RMH residential multiple family dwelling highest density or a more restrictive district for property located north of 2360 South Major Drive. And at a joint public hearing held on June 26, 2023, the planning commission recommended five to two to approve the request for rezoning from residential single family dwelling to residential multiple family highest density or a more restrictive district for property located at 2360 South Major Drive, and staff has recommended approval of the ordinance.
Do we have a motion for item number two?
Move for approval.
It's been moved. Is there a second for item number two?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for, for approval for item number two. Any discussion?
I have a question, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. So this area is currently residential single family, correct?
Yes, sir.
I struggle with taking an area that is residential and then changing it, adding apartment complexes that are tied into the back of residential neighborhoods. I just think that's very unfair to the people that are already in that neighborhood and struggle with it.
Councilman Samuel, then Councilman Getz.
This did go before planning and zoning, correct?
It did pass.
Correct, passed five to two.
Okay.
I, I have to agree with Councilman Neil on this. This is a single family residential neighborhood and, you know, putting apartments right in front of a bunch of houses in their backyards where you have, they can look over the fences into the backyards. We've had problems with this happening in other places along Major Drive. Major Drive has so many apartment complexes right now. Mr. Boone, do you have any idea how many apartment complexes already exist along Major Drive?
I would estimate probably 10 to 12.
I, I really have a concern about adding another one, especially backing up where these are multi-story apartments being proposed. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And so you'll be able to just look into people's backyards. I, I don't, I don't like it. I can't support it.
Councilman Turner.
Mr. Boone, how many notices were mailed out to neighbors and what were some of the responses from the notices mailed out?
So we sent out 19 notices. We received zero in favor. We did see, receive three against, and they were essentially, these are single family houses, and they were against the development.
Mr. Boone, also currently, do you know our, our housing shortage number currently for Beaumont?
In terms of multifamily, the only statistics we would have in terms of estimating a housing shortage is we do get market studies on an annual basis. Usually we get those in conjunction with the housing tax credit applications because those are fairly expensive studies. But they do the last, within the last six months, the studies we've seen is the demand for multifamily housing is still high. It's still in the 90% range. So there is a demand.
Councilman Samuel, then Councilman Philshaw.
Okay, I will simply ask that if this council has that concern, and that is the concern that you have with changing the residential zoning in this particular matter, let's keep that in mind. Because if we think about where the growth areas of our city lie, that means if, if that happens, if that's the problem in that area of the city, let's make sure we remember that when we talk about some of the older areas of the neighborhood of the city and its impact on those citizens also.
Councilman Philshaw.
Chris, I heard you correctly that right now, the study shows that we have a housing shortage when it comes to this type of a facility, multiple family.
In terms of demand for multifamily, that's what the studies have shown us. It's recently within the last six, seven months.
So I'm assuming then that the other complexes are full? That would imply that.
Well, anything 90% or higher is, that shows a demand, for sure.
Councilman Getz.
In my mind, there is a difference between a demand and a shortage. I mean, do you have stats that show that we have a shortage? Yes, there's a demand, but are we unable to meet that demand? Especially in terms of, this is not low to moderate income housing, this is market rate housing, right?
My understanding, yes.
So is the demand different between low to moderate income housing versus market rate housing? Is there a shortage of market rate housing?
The statistics that we get, the 90% include both. So the stats we have don't necessarily differentiate between market rate versus the, we would call subsidized housing.
But that's an important factor because you might have a huge demand for low to moderate income housing and not much demand at all for market rate family housing. Market rate family housing might also include people that want to buy single family homes. So, you know, I, I don't think that there is a, and Mayor, maybe you know what, this is kind of in your business, but, you know, what is the demand like for market rate family homes and what is the supply side of that available?
Well, what I might suggest we consider as a council right now, since Planning and Zoning had approved this, is that we allow Planning and Zoning a little bit more time to staff to review this and bring us, we're asking a lot of questions if we, rather than deny it today or approve it, get more clarity. And in terms of how mu, we could table this, Mr. Boone, how much time do you think y'all would need to research this further? Do you think you're not going to be able to necessarily get any additional information?
We should be able to get the latest market studies that we have, you know, within a week. It's not a pro, well, two weeks.
Two weeks.
Yes, sir. And one thing also we can provide is there have been multiple, as we all know, multiple com- multiple complexes that are either have just been constructed along Major Drive, or let's say Fallsmore or Old Allen, and there's still some that are coming online. So I can also get you the number of units that we are actually not yet open, so.
Okay, thank you. And Councilman Samuel?
So with that information, could you also get, get us an idea of the percentage or the number of new constructed multifamily projects are being, that's out there, and where they're located by area, geographic areas?
Yes, sir.
Yes, Councilman Durio, then Councilman Getz?
The dotted line around, that's the boundaries of this property?
Yes, sir.
So, because I heard Councilman Getz say about people, looking in people's backyards, I don't see many houses that are right on the side of this property.
Yes, sir.
I don't, I see one. I don't see none in the backyard.
Yeah, there's, it looks like there is one to the south and maybe one to the north.
But they're not, they're not buttoned up against neighborhoods.
They look like large lots.
Well, Mr. Boone?
Yes, sir.
When you sent out notices to neighbors?
Nineteen.
Was that just those within 200 feet?
Yes, sir.
You know, if you expanded that to that entire neighborhood, you'd probably get more responses out back.
Yes, sir.
Could you do that?
Well, that's our standard, 200 feet, and so we, through ordinance, could certainly adjust that, but we wouldn't want to do it on a case-by-case basis. I wouldn't recommend that, because the question is for what?
All right.
I would be hesitant to say that. I mean, there, that's the policy. That's the rule. Anyone within that set perimeter are given notice. If we change, then that means somebody can go out and solicit blocks around. That creates a problem. That's why we have policies that's set, based on specific information, and not just subjective to ourselves.
Is there any desire to table this so that we can get additional information? If there is, let's do that, because he'll be bringing back information. If there's no desire to table it, then we can move forward with the vote.
I'll make a motion to table.
July 25th would be the two-week deadline requested by staff.
Okay, so we have a motion to table. Is there a second for that?
Second.
So it's been moved and seconded.
I'm sorry, I missed two second, I mean, motion to table.
Councilman Neal, then Councilman Turner.
Thank you.
And it is two weeks.
It'll be brought back in two weeks.
That'll be July 25th.
There, is there discussion on the motion? Councilman Turner?
Yes, Mayor, I just wanted clarity on some of the information Mr. Boone will come back with. I just read, I don't want to go two weeks and I don't get the information I'm looking for. So one of my concerns is the actual shortage number. I read in the study, it was around 7,000 shortage for homes in Beaumont. I just want to make sure it's accurate. I don't know if that's accurate, so I'd like those numbers to come back, the housing shortage of multifamily. And secondly, it's no secret, we're growing tremendously in certain areas of town, and that's the West End. So I also would like that to be noted, what areas are we really growing in in Beaumont, and I want us to be mindful of, when we're looking at growing our population, you know, at some point, we got to make sure we have places that they stay. And if we want them to do more, single families, maybe as a council, we might tech staff with incentivizing single-family home builders or developers versus, you know, saying we want it and not incentivizing them to actually do it. So that's something that I would like to see, since I see we keep saying, "single families", maybe we should figure out a way as a council to do a workshop and incentivize developers who develop homes to do more single-family projects.
Councilman Durio?
I didn't have any, thanks.
Okay.
Mayor.
Yes, Councilman Felschall.
Chris, I'm sure you can't answer this question, but I'm going to ask it. I'm assuming this two-week delay would not place any undue burden on the developer that you know of.
Not that I'm aware of.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right. We have a motion and a second to table item number two. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. May we have the reading of item number three?
Yes, Mayor. Council consider a request for a specific use permit to allow gaming facility in the GCMD, General Commercial Multiple Family Dwelling District for property located at 39 North 11th Street, Suite B. And at a joint public hearing held on June 26, 2023, the planning commission recommended seven to zero to deny the request for the SGP to allow gaming facility on the property, and recommendation from staff is denial of the ordinance.
We've heard the reading. Is there a motion and a second?
Move to approve the, or the denial, yes.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye about the denial of item number three. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Council consider a request for a specific use permit to allow a duplex in RS residential single-family dwelling district for property located at 10720 Sherwood Drive. And at a joint public hearing held on June 26, 2023, the planning commission recommended five to two to approve the request for a specific use permit to allow a duplex on this property with the following condition: The lot shall be graded to drain towards the street and not onto adjacent properties, and staff is recommending approval of the ordinance with that condition.
Is there a motion and a second for item number four?
I'll make a motion to deny.
There's been a motion to deny. It's been moved by Councilman Neal, seconded by Councilman Getz. Is there any discussion? Councilman Durio?
Is this, this is going to be a new structure in that neighborhood. I was just wondering why I was so quick to deny it.
My, my thought is, is after talking to several of the residents in the, in the neighborhood, is, once again, it's a single-family neighborhood, now putting a duplex in there, and the citizens just are not happy. And I agree that it's not, I don't, I don't think it's appropriate to do it.
But it's basically, it's just a house that's going to have two families in it. That's what a duplex is, correct? So buildings like this, Chris, and you might be able to answer, does this, if you build something like this in a neighborhood, would it tend to lower the property value of the folks that live there?
I don't, I don't have any evidence of that. I can certainly do some research on that. I can say, and you know, we've had several of these over the past, I would say, year. And as I mentioned before, because it's a specific use permit, the reason behind that is it's a case-by-case basis, as to whether or not the proposed use, use in this case, a duplex is appropriate in, in, in the individual location. And so, the only difference between a duplex, as you mentioned, and a single-family home is you have two separate dwelling units instead of one.
Thank you.
Councilman Getz?
Mr. Boone, of planning and zoning, did we have neighbors speaking for or against this?
We sent out 19 notices. We had one in favor. That may have been the property owner. We received zero in response against, but there were, there was a neighbor I know that spoke against it.
Any other comments? Any other discussion? Okay, Councilman Turner?
I just want to reiterate, if we're going to deny the multifamily like we're doing, we, and we want to incentivize single families as a council, maybe we need, we need to do a workshop to figure out what we can do to incentivize developers to do more single-family, because this is going to keep happening. We're going to just, it's going to keep happening. It's been happening since I've been on the council. We deny, we push to deny some of the multifamilies in the single-family neighborhoods, and if that's what we're looking for, maybe we should figure out a way to incentivize them or get staff to.
I'd second your request for a workshop.
We certainly, we have a motion to deny that's been seconded for this property for item number four. Councilman Felschall?
I'm sorry, Mayor. I, Councilman Neal, you, you did talk to neighbors and you, you had multiple concerns, correct? Thank you, Mayor.
All in favor of denying item number four, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion passes on the denial. Item number five?
Council consider a request for a rezoning from general commercial multiple-family dwelling to commercial manufacturing or more restrictive district for property located at 5194 Synt Street. And at a joint public hearing held on June 26, 2023, the planning, planning commission recommended seven zero to approve the request for the rezoning with the following condition: That no vehicles be stored outside of the fence. And staff has recommended approval of the ordinance with that condition.
Our city attorney pointed out that perhaps everybody didn't vote, and she wasn't sure how the vote went, so we're going to go back and vote on item number four about the denial. So, so all those that.
Who you know?
Oh, wait, what?
No, Chris didn't vote. Did you vote? Alden?
Yeah, I mean, I didn't object. I didn't deny. Yeah.
Did you have to vote for or against?
I voted for.
Okay, so I didn't see you vote.
I've been told that if you didn't say anything, that's automatically a four vote.
That was my understanding, too, that silence is, is an affirmative.
No, it's not.
That's a question. I'm not, it's not.
No, silence is not, not an affirmative.
So you, you can, you can vote yea, nay, or abstain.
Yeah, you can vote yea, nay, or abstain.
Thank you, city attorney.
I don't, I don't know where y'all got that from. Y'all just make up stuff.
Well, it makes sense to me.
I read it in the city council handbook.
No, yeah, yeah, but, but here, when it's, when it's like this and it's contingent, when it's like, when people are opposing, you really do need to voice your vote, so we can make sure that it's, it takes four of y'all to agree, so if only three of y'all say something, the rest of y'all are quiet for either for or against, it's, it's kind of confusing.
Okay.
So that, just so we can have an accurate record.
Give us some direction.
No, I'm just saying, if you're, if you're saying your vote was for, then we can just record that in the record, and then it passes.
Okay.
All right, now we'll move on to item number five.
Okay. Oh. Yes.
Sorry, I was in discussion.
If it's not clear, I. I'll read it again, Mayor.
Please don't.
Thank you.
I am familiar. I was the only one that was in dialogue, so is there a motion for item number five?
Move to approve with one condition.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes. May we have the reading of item number six?
Council consider a resolution approving a contract to Vortex Companies for the repair of the five-foot-by-seven-foot oval-shaped storm line on Long Avenue. This is project final step in the rehab of the storm line located in the center of the road from Pine Street to Waltha King, which is major in draining that area of town. And because of the urgency, the fund balance will be used to pay for the repairs of this project, and with the, with the resolution, refund the resolution later to refund the city for the payment of this, these dollars out of the general fund by the issuance of funds.
Okay, is there a motion for item number six?
So move for approval.
It's been moved. Item number six, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion on item number six? Yes, Councilman Neal?
We're doing this as the emergency order and no other prices were necessary.
This is through HGAC by cooperative, so it's pre-negotiated pricing through that satisfies bid requirements.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Do you have the reading of item number sevens?
Approval of the purchase and installation of playground equipment for, for Babes Harriers Park from Craftsman, commercial playgrounds and water springs of spring, and waters, parks of Spring Texas, excuse me, and the purchase and installation of playground equipment for Combes Park from Game Time in care of Cunningham Recreation of Charlotte, North Carolina. And these two were tabled and brought back to council this time. They've been taken to the Parks Board a couple of times. Parks Board came up with the recommendation for projects, and staff has recommended approval.
Is there a motion and a second for approval of item number seven?
So move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded for item number seven for approval. Any discussion?
Mayor?
Councilman Getz?
I move to amend this motion to take the, take these two items separately, starting with Combes Park.
I do not accept the amendment.
So we can vote on my motion?
There would need to be a second, correct?
No.
Sure.
There's going to need to be a second. Per our rules in the agenda.
For the gen, for the amendment? So just have a, well, we're voting on whether to amend it?
No.
Vote the motion on the floor.
That's what I thought, but I was getting confused.
There's a motion on the floor.
But you have to deal with the amended, motion to amend before you take the motion, the primary motion up.
Let's have our city attorney.
So there's been a motion and a second, but there's also been a motion to amend. And so if you, we haven't adopted Robert's Rules of Order officially, so that's something that we need to consider. But when our rules are silent as to how things need to be handled, then Robert's Rules of Order control. So as it relates to an amended motion, when you have an amended motion on the floor, you either vote on whether or not to accept that amendment. If that amendment fails, then you move board and your original motion is back on the floor.
And Madam Attorney, do we have to have the person that made the original motion agree to accept the amendment, or?
So if the amendment is accepted by the person who makes the original motion, then the original motion is amended. If there's no acceptance of the original motion, you have to vote to accept or reject the amendment.
That's what I'm asking, that we vote to accept or reject the amendment, to consider these items separately, because there may be some people that are in favor of one that are not in favor of the other.
Yes. And Councilman Neal, did you have a question before we vote on the amended motion from Councilman Getz to divide, to separate these?
I'd just like to see a copy of our rules, because my understanding is, and I don't want to be argumentative on this, whenever an amendment is made to a motion, it does not require a second, and our rules state that that new motion should be voted on first.
That's exactly what it says.
And I'd just like to see a copy of the rules to clarify that.
Correct, and I'm ill-prepared. Manager, do you have a copy of your rules?
I was looking through them now.
I, I will suggest that we take a five-minute reset while that is being checked on, and we convene back here at 3:25. we convene back here at 3:25. concession, we did receive clarity. Thank you, city manager. And we, at this point, will vote on the amendment to the original motion. So we are asking all those in favor of a. We, we don't need a second for that. So there is no second for the amendment, but we are voting on the amendment to whether the initial motion will be amended.
Do I need to restate my amendment?
I'm pretty clear on it, but we, go ahead.
My, my motion to amend is to take these issues separately, starting with Combes Park.
So it has been moved to take these issue amended, there's been an amended motion to take these issues separately. All those in favor of amending the motion, say aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion fails, so now we'll move on to the motion. Do we have any more discussion? Councilman Getz.
So on these two issues, let me make my position clear. I do support putting the playground equipment back at Combes Park. I don't think the playground equipment should have ever been removed from Combes Park, but since it was, I think that it needs to have playground equipment back there. Babes of Harriers Park is a different situation, though. Babes of Harriers Park is used almost exclusively for soccer. It is primarily used on Sunday. The idea here is to put playground equipment there at a cost of $79,000. Playground equipment has not existed there, to my knowledge, ever in the past. Furthermore, and this is something that I think that neither the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee had before it, or the city council had before it, when we first considered the question of putting playground equipment at the Harriers Park, is the fact that there is another park, literally two blocks away, that has not just playground equipment, but a splash pad and a covered basketball court and a baseball field. Another thing that has come to my mind since we started talking about this two weeks ago is, has anybody actually gone out to speak to people at the soccer fields in the Hispanic community primarily, who utilize this place on Sunday afternoons? Whether or not this is something that they want to see there, or is there something that they would rather have besides playground equipment? Well, I have, and what I'm hearing is that they would like bleachers there with covers on them as opposed to playground equipment, because people are there to watch their family member play soccer. I want you to think about this for a second. If you're a mother and you're there to watch your husband play soccer, and you've got small kids in tow, those kids are in most cases going to want to watch daddy. I don't know, a whole lot of mothers would say, oh, it's fine, you go run around on your own over here in this park where we know that there's a lot of homeless people. You go ahead and do that, because I'm going to be focused on watching my husband and your daddy play soccer. Y'all go do what you want. Go play on the playground. That's just not, that, that just doesn't make good sense. And then, of course, there is the matter about the fact that Rogers Park, which is clearly one of the most active parks in the city of Beaumont, does not have a covered shelter. A covered shelter at Sprout Park was approved earlier this year. We approved it for 150,000, but now I'm told it's going to be costing closer to 200,000. That was brought out at the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board meeting today. And yet, and I voted for that. I, I support that. But I think that Rogers Park needs a shelter. All it has now is a pavilion, barely big enough to accommodate one picnic table. So, you know, this council, I, I can see the way that the winds are blowing, you know, and there's a desire to put playground equipment out there by, by the majority of council, if not all the rest of council. I do want to point out that two weeks ago, our Parks Director said that he, he doesn't think that there is a need for playground equipment out there other than swings. He would not put a full playground out there. So, you know, you got your Parks Director not supporting this. You've got all the reasons that I just said.
Right.
And I'll let it stop there.
All right, Councilman Saw, I am, Aldwin Samuel, Councilman Turner, Councilman Neal, then I'll let Councilman Felschall speak, and then I'll go to Councilman Durio. The manager has any words, we can hear from him, and I'll, I'll finish up.
Okay. Okay, Councilman, I understand what you're saying. Now. We very well could have, we can deal with this very easily. It's not, we don't have to pit, be pitted against one another. I respect staff. I respect the committees that we appoint to deal with these matters. It's gone through that process, and that's the purpose of the process, okay? With that, we're about to go into our budget year. There's no reason for Rogers Park to be pitted against any other park or any other faction of the community. That's not needed. There's a need for a pavilion at Rogers Park. I think we all understand that. And it would be just as easy just to say, okay, let's work on the pavilion at Rogers Park. And I, I would have voted, I, I support that. Now, two years ago, I would now have a problem with getting a pavilion, possibly, because of the way you tried to do it. I was, you know, Roger, I said, let's do the dog park. I've been, I fought it for the longest, and I will admit, there were times I fought it because it was you and the way that you did it. But I, I, I'm, I'm, I'm just saying, but we're, we're beyond that now. I think we, we work together now, and that's what I'm trying to continue to do. I can support that, but think about it, Mike. It's on I-10. We have a lot of people using it at certain times. There's a need for something else out there. Big brother can go with the little, little brother over to the playground while mom and dad are watching the soccer. I mean, that's gone through a process. It's gone through the committee, it's gone through staff, so. I'm just saying. But, okay, that's all I have to say.
Okay, then, Councilman Turner, then Councilman Neal.
Well, mine, mine's a little different, Mr. Manager. I know there's been some email exchange that I've been included in, where Councilmember Getz was asking for the work orders for the playground equipment at Combes Park. And I actually have a huge issue as well, because, you know, we didn't get those work orders that we were told were being put in to remove the playground equipment. So I think that's a big issue, because we're removing something and we don't have any proof of the reason it was moved. So I'm, I have a huge problem with that as well. I want to say that out loud so everyone can see. That's a big problem. And my second thing is, originally, I had a problem with the playground equipment at Babes of Harriers, but it wasn't because it was Babes of Harriers, it was because of the process. Originally, this council, with the exception of Mr. West, we kind of gave instructions how we want to see the Parks and Recs Committee put together this list. That didn't happen the way we instructed it. To be completely honest, we have Parks and Recs Committee members in the, in the, in the audience that can attest to that. So what I'm asking is, moving forward, I don't think it's worth the fight today, but moving forward, if the council moves as a whole for things to be done a certain way, that's the way it needs to be. I don't think it should be done any other way if we agree in unison that that's the way it needs to be. So my problem is more the process of where we got, how we got to it, not actually the project that's in front of us. So originally, I had a huge problem with it, but right now, for the unison's sake and what everyone has went through to get there, I'm in support of it. But originally, as Mike said, I wasn't because of the process of how we got there. So I ask you, now you're new to this, you wouldn't about, you didn't instruct this process, but if this council, well, you're not new to this. If this council is saying that we want it done a certain way, we're saying in unison, I, I would ask that staff does it that way.
I understand, and I was hoping I didn't have to speak on this one. Then that was a process, council member, and much of it was followed, you know? It did go to the Parks Board twice, maybe three times, quite frankly. And at one time, they actually scored and ranked these projects, and they came back with the recommendation of how they were ranked. And Combes Park was ranked as the third project on their list, and Babes of Harriers was ranked on the 10th project of the list out of 18 projects that they came back with. And that was their feedback in coming back with that. Of course, staff had input, too. Staff ranked these projects and even included some projects, didn't rank it as high, but was looking at the city geographically and demographically and, and, and trying to put together a program of projects that benefited the entire city and looking at it. So there, there was a lot of discussion, and then this council passed a resolution that approved these listed projects once before, that by this body was approved. This, these projects were in that prior resolution approved by this board. So it was a fairly vetted process, and there could have been some things you disagreed with, but it went back and forth for a long time and a lot of different things. And with staff going back, looking at it and reshuffling the deck and, and coming back with recommendations. But the Parks Board approved it and ranked it. This council approved it and ranked it, and, and then you tabled it last time, and wanted to bring it back for discussion.
All right.
And just to, to piggyback off of that, so we're all on the same page, I agree. We have roughly 33 parks in Beaumont, and we're speaking about 18 of them. This council instructed, and again, it was prior to you, and I think it was during Mr. Boone's interim stage, we instructed our board to go around to the 33 different parks and give us recommendations, and they're supposed to ride together. That's the part that I'm saying, it never happened. And that's the part that I have a problem with. If we said it as a council, that's the part that should have actually happened.
Okay, I've got Councilman Neal.
Thank you, Mayor. Kind of piggyback off of something Councilman Samuel brought up about actually funding and putting a shelter over at Rogers Park. What would be the process to amend the next year's capital plan to add that in there as they funded on item?
It wouldn't be complicated at all, Councilmember Neal. It's basically staff looking at it, coming up with the cost associated with the project, and then plugging it in for whatever year you'd like to see it built. If it's 24, 25, we can put it in there and identify possible funding or, well, I guess it's 23, 24, whatever. So it's not a complicated process at all.
Do we need somebody else on council to second that request to get that brought back to us?
Excuse, excuse me, Councilman Neal. Can we, I, I understand the direction this is going, but right now, we have a motion and a second, and we will have a chance for council member comments at the end. And I think at that point, it'd be better to address these issues at that point. And so I'm going to ask that we go ahead and call the vote on the initial.
Thing I just wanted to add, if that's okay. I appreciate council's apparent willingness to consider a pavilion at Rogers Park, and I also understand that there is a process. However, I, I do want to point out that the process doesn't work if people don't show up to participate in the process. There's 13 positions on the Park and Recreation Advisory Board. Today, for most of the meeting, only three members were there, and one came in late at the end, so we had four. At the meeting where these were ranked, we had, I think, five members of the 13 there. So, and a part of the process, of course, is our vote today. That's, that's the last stage of the process, so that's part of the process. Another thing in the process that's real important is that everybody be given good information. Good information to have had in this matter would have been, hey, we want you to consider putting a playground at the Harriers Park, but by the way, there is. putting a playground at Seharius Park, but by the way, there is a park with a playground two blocks away." That information wasn't provided, not to council, not to the advisory board. So, all of that is part of the process, and I'm just gonna sum it up by saying, yes, I agree, the process is important.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve item number seven. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. So, we're gonna, if we will, have the reading of item number eight.
Thank you, Mayor. Council consider resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into an agreement with Garfield Public Private LLC to conduct a market study, perform planning and design services, determine estimated costs, and develop a business and financing plan related to the possible development of a hotel on property owned by the city. You know, over the years, the city has invested in redevelopment downtown, and it's been a continuous focus over the last period of time, especially since I've been here. We're looking at strategic plans and downtown plans, economic development plans, et cetera. So, this project is, would be like phase two of preliminary planning and design from which you've been working with. This will give you some ideas of renderings and presentations from this group. It'd be visits from the group. It also includes some public input processes. So, basically, this will give you the information. You will need to take this project to a third phase if you so choose to. So, this is just a natural progression of looking at the possible development of a downtown hotel. And staff is recommending approval.
Okay, so is there a motion for approval of item number eight?
Move to approve the resolution.
It's been moved by Councilman Gess, seconded by Councilman Samuel. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, now is the time for any citizen who wishes to speak to make public comments. If you haven't made public comments at the beginning, we ask that you complete a green sheet because the kiosk isn't working, and, and you will, the city clerk will call your name, will appreciate that you keep it to three minutes, and at that time, your mic will be muted, but someone from the city will follow up with you if you're not able to finish your statement, or if you are. So, at this point.
I don't have any, Mayor.
So, we're gonna begin with council member comments, and I'll start with Councilman Neal.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, just wanted to bring back up the, the option for, in the next couple of weeks, to amend the capital plan to include the shelter at Rogers Park. Something else I'd like for us to look into, Councilman Gess brought it up, talking about safety concerns on the playground at Babes of Harriers, and that being that close to the freeway, maybe we should also look at the idea of fencing this playground in over
Councilman Samuel.
Well, I'd just like to say, it was about 1984 or 1985 when Mayor Neal was the mayor. This council, or a council, moved, made efforts to get a downtown hotel, and it moved, installed, and moved, installed. I'm just happy to see this council committed to looking at making that a reality for our citizens downtown.
Thank you, Councilman Felschall.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, just again, to say that the staff and Emily Wheeler did a phenomenal job with the July 4th celebration, and also, there was a great event this weekend by Mayor West at the Compost Center, just a great time for our community to come together and celebrate Beaumont. I would just say, well done. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Turner.
Yeah, Mayor, it's good food and drinks. It should have been. I appreciate the hospitality, and thank you for doing something positive for our city. I think it's needed. We do have proposed in our budget for a study for a water park, to my understanding. I just wanna confirm that because a citizen did talk about it. Is it possibly in there? Is it proposed in there?
It's proposed at this point, unless the budget gets really tight, and we have to make some tough decisions by council, but we're moving it along in the process. It's in there.
Okay, thank you. Mike will probably sponsor it. And the next thing is, sidewalks, if you notice on Washington Boulevard, and Chris, you probably can speak to this, we have a new construction street on Washington Boulevard in certain parts of the sidewalks. The weeds are outgrowing and covering the sidewalks already, and I hate for the city to make that substantial investment, and the weeds are already overtaking the sidewalks in certain areas. Another thing I'd like to congratulate, Coach David Green, the Sarah Street Gym being named after him, I wanna congratulate him on that. Mr. Williams, Rain Tree Apartments, I got a few phone calls from residents, and they leave voicemails, and if we can, see if we can get someone from staff by the, you can just send me the last inspection of what took place over there, just getting a few complaints. So, just wanted to bring that up. Congratulations to the Beaumont Seminoles. I know they say Golden Triangle, but we gonna call them in Beaumont on that championship. 2155 North Street, it's a consistent flow of water that's coming from underneath the street. I got a video of that. I sent the email this morning. And another thing, the feeder road off of I-10 by Mount Gilead Baptist Church, I had two different citizens tell me they caught a flat, and I know there's text dot, but I just wanna tighten up on them because the same thing with text dot, with the feeder road by Main Event, my wife caught a flat. So, I, I really wanna make sure we get on top of text dot. They redoing the freeways, but our feeder roads are in bad shape, and I really wanna keep them accountable to making sure they take care of the citizens of Beaumont because their funding goes directly to them. So, I wanna make sure they allocate it properly.
Councilman Gess.
Thank you, Mayor, and I wanna echo the comments made about Emily Wheeler and her staff doing a great job at the 4th of July celebration, as well as the Celebrate Beaumont event that you hosted, Mayor. It was really, really an incredible show of unity throughout the city. I want to also thank the council for being willing to consider a covered pavilion at Rogers Park. We're not there yet, but that's something that we can hopefully look forward to. I want to also talk about this water park study, because it was back in 2013 after I became aware that the city of Baytown had put in a water park, that we decided that we needed to start looking at the possibility of Beaumont doing something similar to that. However, the leadership at that time was not prepared to make that investment, and that's unfortunate because now I know that, you know, Baytown is continuing to make strides. They have a Hyatt Regency Hotel that they just opened that many of us toured, and we're trying to do something like that downtown. And that, to me, is important to do anything downtown. You've gotta have people downtown. Hotel, a full-service hotel and convention center will help do that, combined with some of the restaurants that are starting back up on Crocker Street. You can see how, like the phoenix rising from the ashes, how downtown Beaumont has the opportunity to do that again. So, there should be a lot of good things to look forward to in the future.
Thank you, Councilman Gess. Councilman Durio.
Thank you, Mayor. So, I'm last. You guys stole everything I wanted to say, but I have some other stuff to say. I think we already went over the turf at Sprout Park, because I did get a lot of calls because they were like, "It's just the turf, this raggedy stuff." So, I had to explain it to them what it was. Also, at Sprout Park, you know, that's in a neighborhood called the Pear Archer, and we do have some pear trees that are here, but we hadn't planted them because they said because of the heat, they're kinda delicate, so we're gonna wait a while, but they're, they're here, and they're gonna be planted in Sprout Park. Also, I'm glad my park committee member was there, and this list was what the park committee recommended, and I'm glad and appreciate their work, and I'm glad that we went with, as far as I know, I went with what my committee member recommended. Let's see. Say, we're already thinking about a water park now. There is a playground in Taro Park. We do have sidewalks on Washington Boulevard already. There's a lot of construction going on, Interstate 10. There's gonna be construction going on, and correct me if I'm wrong, but probably for the next seven to 10 years. So, be very careful. You have to pay attention, watch the warning signs, you know, to, to avoid accidents. It's gonna be a while, but the text dot guy told us, progress takes time. So, we're just gonna have to be patient, and it will get finished. And then, right after they finish that, then they'll probably start on another 10-year project, but just this way it is. Let's see. Also, for Babes of Harriers Park, we still had a Babes of Harriers museum there, correct? So, you know, when folks stop by on the highway to go and see that museum, you know, can have a playground there for the kids to go in, you know, as like a, a rest stop for them, you know, something they come to, "Hey, look at that," you know, and they could pull over there and go in the museum, and then go play in the park. And Mike, you probably, if we put this on the budget for next year, you'll probably get a, a better, a better covered shelter than I have at Sprout Park. Lights, electricity, ceiling fans, all that. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Councilman Durio, thank you. City Attorney? Public Works?
I will pass along text dot's number for citizens, 409-892-7311. I'll be more than glad to pass along the, the various complaints that we get, but you can call them directly. As Councilman Durio mentioned, it's gonna be under construction for a while. The company that is under contract to do the construction on that particular part of the road is then responsible for the upkeep of the feeder road and the highway while they're doing the construction. So, when you make that complaint to text dot, text dot will be reaching out to the contractor to stay on top of that. And again, that number's 409-892-7311.
Bart, if, can a citizen call in to Beaumont 311 with a complaint about that?
They can, and we'll pass it along to text dot, but realize, when we talk to text dot, we're just one entity. If the citizens call text dot directly, they'll get a better sense out of how many people are, are having that particular problem, so.
All right, thank you.
Nothing, Mayor. Thank you.
Mr. Ellis.
My apologies, Mayor, for not being able to be present for Celebrate Beaumont. I was out of, I was out of the city, so I apologize for not being there, but I heard it was a fantastic event.
Thank you. No worries.
Mayor, I'd like to congratulate the city on getting a film friendly designation, you know? There's a saying that small changes make big differences. Things like this can make a big difference in your city because it can bring a lot of attention to your city. I was in a smaller town before, but we were designated, and we had a lot of major productions come to town after we got there. A lot of the Friday Night Lights segments were shot there, a lot of movies were shot there, and you'd be surprised what comes to your town when they know that you're receptive to them to shoot a picture. So, congratulations again, congratulations, thanks to Miles for the work he did on that project. Miles, he walked it from beginning to end, so thank you, Miles, and let's give Miles a hand. He did a good job in getting us through that, so thanks. There was a mention of sidewalks too during the public comments. We are looking at building in dollars for sidewalks and doing a lot of things with sidewalks in next year's budget, so we want the citizens to know that we are listening to them and being considerate in that process. The electronic agenda, we're going through that with you and you as a council in particular, so any feedback that you might have to make it less painful for you in the short term, let us know, because it will get easier, and it gets better for sure. And Mayor, too, Monsieur Vent, I talked to you beforehand, I was, I had a school reunion that I had committed to sometime, and I'm actually, I was officially inducted into a Hall of Honor of that school that night, so I missed it, but we'll make up for it somewhere. Thank you. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Manager.
Yes, congratulations. And I just, a couple of comments, 4th of July was a fabulous event, as all events are with the city of Beaumont and Emily Wheeler leading that, but, you know, we also had Beaumont Police and Beaumont Fire and EMS, and, you know, everything went off. And in today's world, we certainly can't take any of that for granted, and I know that they are well-prepared for any, anything that would occur, and we're thankful for having such an excellent city staff. I also want to mention that at I-10, right before Cardinal Drive, right after Washington, there were a lot of accidents. I had several calls personally as mayor about that because that lane would end, that was being, that's being restripped today to close that three into two, so that you have to exit Washington, which I think, and we can certainly follow up with text dot on those other issues. And today, being new up here, I'm recognizing that perhaps we need to be workshopping our process and perhaps committees, just to get more clarity, because obviously, when we have these committees, when we're, as a council, as we did today, taking, taking action against what they're recommending, that's certainly what we're here to do when we believe that, but we also need to be checking our process and giving instructions so that we can have perhaps less of that in the future. And it's a workshop idea, and I think there's been some other ideas associated, you know, brought up about that. And I certainly wanna thank everybody that came to the Celebrate Beaumont. It was open to the public, and all our council people, I thank you all for being able to attend, and those that were here, I thank you all. And at this point, the meeting is adjourned.